Can you hear it?
So can Kate hear us now?
Yes.
Hey Kate, can we get a roll call?
Yes. Although, okay, I can't really see anything. And I can't see the council chambers.
You don't need to see those.
Well, I could do roll call without it, but it's probably best that we get that streaming.
I thought I only got one.
There we go.
Okay, sweet. We're here.
All right, I'll start with roll call. Chair Snow. Vice Chair Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Costello.
Here.
Commissioner Tippett.
Here.
Commissioner Smallwood.
Here.
Commissioner Benson.
Here.
And Commissioner Erickson. Okay. I don't see her online either, so. My marker is absent.
All right, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from January 12th, 2021 meeting?
Yep.
Yes.
Any questions?
No.
Anything?
Nope.
I know.
I'm so disappointed.
I know, I didn't find any problems with this one. Sorry, I did my best.
Okay, thank you.
So do we have a motion on it?
Okay, I'll make a motion to pass the minutes for January 12th, 2022.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded.
Don't need to roll call.
No roll call.
This is all in favor.
Aye.
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 All right, our first public hearing meeting is Chad Jones representing Marcus Lonardo. Did I say that right? Request rezone approval for property located at 160 East 7200 South from single-family residential duplex overlay 7200 South overlay FS1 DO 7200 South to mixed-use 7200 South overlay MU 7200 South to allow for proposed 17-unit three-story townhome project with flex space ground level for home office business space. Elizabeth is presenting.
Yeah, I'll be covering for her tonight, so these first two items, I'll handle those.
Okay, thanks.
Cool, I just wanted to make sure it's on the screens. Can everyone hear me okay? I'll try to talk loud as well, so. The first item on the agenda tonight, this is a request for rezone. The address is 160 East 7200 South. Again, this is from the single-family residential duplex overlay to the mixed-use zone. Both of those would keep the 7200 South overlay, but they are asking for the mixed-use zone on this piece. The vicinity map shows where it is in relation to the surrounding area. The conceptual plan, should the rezone be approved ultimately by council, the applicant proposes a 17-unit townhome project with basically a flex space on the ground level for live-work type of scenario. And so we're not necessarily talking about the concept tonight, but should the rezone move forward, this is then what would be the next step and it would be in for further review. So the city code outlines criteria that should be considered when considering a rezone. The request before you tonight satisfies goal number three or criteria number three is listed above in that the area and the surrounding the subject property has changed and is undergoing a lot of change. There is currently a mix of houses or a mix of businesses and residential opportunities. It's along a busy primary corridor 7200 South. And then should this move forward, the zone intends to create a higher-density residential buffer between 7200 South and the busy corridor that it is and then the single-family residential to the south. One of the purposes in the 7200 South overlay is to facilitate the transition of the corridor from single-family residential neighborhoods to a mix of commercial and residential uses. And the proposed zone change to mixed-use would be consistent and compatible with the changing and emerging character of the area and the neighborhood along 7200 South. In addition, the rezone would also help to further satisfy criteria number one in that it does support the general plan and the general plan's vision of this area. The general plan identifies this area as an opportunity area, specifically the east gateway opportunity area. And within the general plan goals for the east gateway opportunity area, the proposal before you tonight specifically supports goal number one and number six in that it does allow for a higher-density housing option to be placed in the area and then also supporting the redevelopment of a currently underutilized property for a commercial flex space. So with that, there are a number of findings that have been identified in the staff report. And the staff's recommendation is that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval onto the city council. And I can try to answer any questions you may have.
Does have questions?
Not at this time.
No, not right now. Should there come any I can address those?
Is the applicant here? You want to come up?
Evening, thank you for your time tonight.
Please state your name.
Chad Jones.
Okay. Tell us your name.
Yeah. Appreciate your time and your consideration. I do feel like this property is in a good spot to create that buffer between the commercial and the single-family residential back behind it. It has changed quite a bit. There's a new corner grocery store right across the street. It's within a five-minute walking distance, multiple restaurants in the Walgreens. We want to try to create a community there that can be a full live-work space, easy walking distance, public transit's right there. I would like to say also that in between the time that this was submitted, this plan with 17 units, we have considered trying to make this a little less dense, a little more of a community feel. Also, there were concerns we talked about in DRC with parking, so we have reduced it to 16 units and added additional parking. So what you see, what has been presented will not be what we are planning to submit. We have already got it all lined up, ready to submit for master plan application, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
How many parking stalls did that add, eliminate in a unit?
That added five. Five stalls plus on the duplex side on Romany, those both have full-length park or driveways for four additional stalls, plus every unit has two-car garage. So 32 with the stalls plus the five plus eight, so I think we should be covered on parking. We have also considered amenities, we also spaced out the buildings to not have such a dense fill, so there's no more than four units combined. So we put some pathways in between, created some space for amenities, for dog parks, and picnic tables. Just try to make it, try to do the most we can with the property, with the lot.
Do you guys have any questions for him?
Not right now.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the public have?
Go ahead and open it for a public hearing.
Can we open this as a public hearing?
Good evening, my name is Sarah Sherwood and I reside with my husband at 105 East Nicoletti. Thank you for your time this evening and giving me the opportunity to address my concerns as well as the concerns of my neighborhood. When properties go for sale in the Romani area, it's called the historic Romani neighborhood. Several of our neighborhood founders are in attendance today, many of whom wept with tears when they found out about this proposal. As an established neighborhood that was created in the late 50s and early 60s, the Romani neighborhood is changing, that is correct. Older families are phasing out of independent living or passing and new young families are being attracted to this very quiet neighborhood with excellent access to everything the valley and the city of Midvale does have to offer. That being said, we do not want this development, but we are not opposed to growth and development. This proposal is not going to enhance our neighborhood and will have a dramatic and lasting effect for years and possibly decades. As an illustration, not only in addition to those in attendance here with me this evening, myself and some neighbors had an opportunity to collect more than 100 signatures. From people in our community, there's a copy for each of you. Three additional pages were received prior to me being able to couple it with the petitions you see in front of you. So over 111 signatures were collected, mine was not amongst them. I didn't need to sign a petition because I knew I would be here today. I do have some big concerns over the information that was presented to you tonight from the planning director. First, in the packet that was published online, the information stated that the city had received no objections to this planned community. I also have emails to share with you, the first of which is dated December the 2nd, prior to the initial time that this public hearing was supposed to be held, as well as an email that was sent today because it was our assurance from the city planning commission office that any objections... that any objections would be shared with you, and that has failed to occur this evening. In the public packet for the December meeting, the information that was shared only stated that this development met the third goal, which Mr. Olson pointed out today. Nothing has really changed on this project in terms of what was presented to the commission or made available to the public, and yet miraculously tonight, it meets an extra goal. I'm confused as to why goal one was not met in December and is now being met today. That doesn't make sense to me. Additionally, the packet that was made available to the public and was presented to the zoning commission only states that it meets goal number six of commercial light industrial use. Mr. Olson just made a presentation saying it also met goal number one. Once again, this information was not made available to the public. This brings about many concerns in the information that the zoning department, the city of Midvale, and how it's being presented to commission members so that you can make the best decision in how to reshape our city. That being said, as the developer just noted, the ground floor living space simply does not qualify as a bedroom. The developer has not been required to share with the city or concerned citizens whether these units will be for rent or for purchase. To claim that this development would meet commercial and light industrial space is unfounded as renters are highly unlikely to establish home-based businesses that require customer interaction. While the zoning ordinance requires the new development maintain the character of the neighborhood, this did not hold true for the newly opened lofts at Fort Union, which are a very modern flat-roofed complex which now tower over an established neighborhood. Just like this proposed development will do to our neighborhood. Further, just the other week, when traveling westbound on Fort Union, I was stopped for more than five minutes by law enforcement because a tow truck driver was unable to safely access a home at the loft at Fort Union to be able to tow a vehicle. So I guess the moral of the story is, if you want to live in Midvale and want to live in a new development, you better not have car problems because you can't get it to the repair shop. As noted by the developer, he's made some adjustments for parking concerns, but we still have a number of them. There is not sufficient parking on Nicoletti, and there will no longer be any street parking on Romani. Well, my primary concern is the development being proposed at one sixty east. There are implications into the next public hearing item of the one seventy lot. The one seventy lot only has enough space to provide for one parking space. Any parking that they thought they would be utilizing on Romani will be eliminated by the proposed development. And in order for that business to function at one seventy east, a minimum of ten parking spaces will be needed, and they're not there. Our neighborhood has experienced crime rate increases, and we have no there's no drive-throughs from police or law enforcement in our neighborhood. There's no monitoring of any of that. In fact, I found a study, I'll be happy to provide you with a copy if you're interested, Mr. Olson, that was done by Indiana University Public Policy Institute called Land Use and Violent Crimes, which specifically states, excuse me, I can, you can see I've done my homework here this evening. There seems to be something about high-density residential units that is associated with all types of serious violent crime, even controlling for other factors in the model, the author writes. Apparently, high-density housing units promotes serious violent crime. Generally speaking, the study found higher rates of robbery, aggravated assault, and rape in commercial areas, and higher rates of violent crime in areas traversed by major streets. It found generally lower crime rates in areas with parks, cemeteries, and schools. So as it's been noted, this opportunity zone, as you'll call it, at Fort Union, State Street and seventy-two, is already a major thoroughfare which attracts crime, and you're inviting more with a high-density housing unit. I'd like to share with you some information. And I've provided enough copies for everyone. The first you'll see is a report that I purchased actually from a, a third-party agency called Neighborhood Scout. The first page deals with how people in Midvale get around. And quite frankly, specifically, this report is only for Fort Union Boulevard as far east as five forty south, or excuse, far east is five forty east and as far south as seventy-five hundred south. So this is the immediate area which would be impacted by this proposed development. As you can see by the first page, a majority of people drive alone and have one to two cars, and thirty-three percent have three vehicles. The city commission zoning office is promoting that this development would increase walkability to transit, but that doesn't really appear to be a great need for this area. Perhaps for our environment, it would be better, but it's not a need based on these statistics. The Neighborhood Scout report goes on to talk about violent crimes in our area and our crime index. The chances of becoming a victim of violent crime just in that neighborhood is one in three hundred and forty, which is higher than the city of Midvale overall. The risk of becoming a, a victim of property crime is one in twenty-six, which is also higher than the city of Midvale. Overall, a second crime report from another uh site, Area Vibes, rated the city of Midvale a D-plus as a place to live, with specifically it related to crime. The final crime report, the next to final crime report that I've showed, it's difficult to see in the black and white print. I'm sorry, I couldn't afford color printing on all this for you guys this evening. But I would encourage you to go and look on your own. The highest densities of crime in the city are nearest to sub, to the I- fifteen corridor, but the next highest areas will bleed into our area east of State Street. And if outside reports aren't enough for you, I've also analyzed four years of data from the Unified Police Department. Within that data set, assaults are on the rise, theft and larceny is on the rise, vehicle burglary is on the rise, drive-by shootings increased, gang-related violence increased, graffiti increased, sex crimes increased, vandalism increased, and weapon or force-involved crimes increased. And to me, and for those of my neighbors who support me in this effort, we would find that this is compelling evidence to consider that you would please not approve this development. Finally, I have also provided you with a KSL article that was published Monday of this week that promotes that Utah leaders want growth, but the average citizen does not. We would like you to take that into consideration. This development is yet a further example of allowing millionaires and out-of-state investors to capitalize on our real estate market that is pricing everyday Utahns out of renting or ever owning a home. At the bare minimum, I would request that this matter be tabled for an opportunity to just, to conduct a traffic study because Nicoletti and Romani are already through streets that have increased traffic that are not of our neighbors. And at least once a week, I almost get hit by a car while walking my dog, let alone any children that might want to play in their front yards. The second study that I would request would be a utility study. Already, many residents, even in new developments, are complaining of poor water pressure. And quite frankly, there's just not enough water to go around. I also have worked in a city that owned their own utilities, and I know that increased demand on water and sewer systems can have dramatic negative effects on existing structures. And that is a big concern. And just the last two, few years that I've lived in this neighborhood, I have seen multiple homeowners having to handle the bur, burden of digging up their entire front yards to replace their water mains. While I realize that is not a city problem, overdevelop, development is a repercussion of that. I'd like to reiterate that I'm not opposed to development. We would like to see these lots developed for something that enhances our neighborhood, increases walkable places for fit people to take their families, a coffee shop, a restaurant. This property has never been listed for sale, and this is just the first person that offered enough money. But it does not and will not enhance our neighborhood. The last thing that I'll leave you with, and probably the most sad thing for me, was the number of people that I talked to who said, "Don't waste your time. The city doesn't care about us." And that is disheartening, and I'd like to believe that that's not the case. So I hope that you will hear my voice, that you will look at the hundred-plus signatures that you've received today and take a long, hard thought about whether or not this development really will enhance the neighborhood that you will change forever. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I would just want to know. Number one, I've worked with this city for almost twenty-eight years. I've been on planning and zoning for years. I've been on city council for sixteen years. For twenty-eight years, I've worked with this city. I've lived in this city for almost seventy-seven years. And you know, we do care. We always have cared. And for you to get up and say that we don't care, we do care. And we care about the growth. We're trying to make it good for everyone. But with all this material and all this crime rate, if you talk to the cops too, they'll tell you it's no different here than it is up and down the Wasatch Front and there, in every other community. We all have a problem with crime. But you know, I'm sorry to, to get up and say that we don't care. I mean, I've devoted twenty-eight years of my life to this city, and then to have somebody say that I don't care.
I think she said that she hopes.
Can you please come up?
You need to come up to the mic if you're gonna speak.
But I mean, I, I just had to get a few things clear, and not only that, but the situation that we're doing tonight, it's just a rezone. We're not building anything there yet. It's just a rezone.
But that opens the door.
If you wanna talk, gotta come up, state your name, please.
Hi, good evening. Um, I apologize in advance, I'm not great with public discussions, so I've written some thoughts. My name is Laura Kelch. I'm a resident at one-one-three East Nicoletti Drive. That's four units down from the proposed rezone, rezone lot. Um, and I have some concerns I'd like to express. I would like to start out by reading a poem. It's entitled "Green Mountains" by James Russell Lowell. Ye mountains that are far off, lift up your heads. Seen dimly through their canopies of blue, the shades of my unrestful spirit sheds distance, created beauty over you. I am not well content with this far view. How may I know what foot of loved ones treads your rock moss-grown and sun-dried torrent beds? We should love all things better if we knew what claims the meanest have upon our hearts. Perchance even now, some eye that would be bright to meet my own looks on your own mist-froaked forms. Perchance your grander, a greet, a deep joy imparts to souls that have encircled mine with light. Oh, brother heart, with thee my spirit warms. We live in a valley of incredible beauty and stunning mountain views. People are drawn to our state because of the natural beauty it shares with us. I know that when my husband and I purchased our home two and a half years ago, that it was the stunning and peaceful beauty of the incredible mountain views that sold me on our property. I cherish the majestic vistas of Mount Olympus and Twin Peaks as the sun rises over them in the morning and illuminates them with myriad colors at sunset. As a registered nurse who has cared for our community throughout this pandemic, those mountain views have become more than just a pretty view and have instead become a daily focus for meditation and prayer as I try to prioritize my own mental health during the hardest years yet in my career. Seeing the natural beauty of our valley sustains me and grounds me in a very real and very valuable way. I'm concerned that the simplicity of our residential neighborhood will be negatively impacted by this rezoning and the potential construction of a towering three-story townhome and office structure. The mountain views on my street will be obstructed for me and my neighbors. And the tone of our sleepy little neighborhood will be shifted by the inclusion of a giant townhome structure. I will acknowledge that our community is in need of affordable housing. I'm not unaware of the housing crisis. Yet I personally believe that a rezone to allow such a massive three-story building is unnecessary simply to include mixed-use office space. The future residents of any future housing development deserve to have unobstructed views of our incredible valley too, just as myself, my children, and my fellow neighbors do. There's ample evidence in medical literature acknowledging that having a connection to the natural world is protective of our mental health as a human population. So let's recognize that and honor our community's need to be connected to our greater natural world by saying no thank you to the rezone and to large obstruction, obstructive housing complexes. I humbly ask the city council and the planning commission to hear and address these concerns. At the very least, I ask you to please restrict the building codes in our neighborhood to no higher than two floors so that we can pursue, preserve the beauty of our city and all of our connection to this incredible natural valley that we call home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service. I'm not gonna be as long. Um, my name is Dale Alvarado. I live at ninety-eight Nicoletti Drive. I've been there over twenty-one ye, uh, almost twenty-one years. Um, the reason I'm here is to tell you that, as Ms. Um, Sarah indicated, we're not opposed to growth and redevelopment. It's only realistic that we do, but we are impol, uh, against having more traffic, more crime, and more pollution, and more noise in our neighborhood. Nicoletti is a narrow street. Mr. Olson, have you been on Nicoletti?
I don't think so, not.
It's as long as this rope here, from the house across the street from me. It's twenty-five feet. It's very narrow. If we get more traffic, I'm afraid we'll have pedestrians hit, people on bikes, kids on bikes, people walking, people who don't have cars walk their air all night. We don't have police enforcement of, of speeders. We have people driving through there thirty, forty miles an hour. We have the taco stand. It's great food, but no one did anything to help us with the increased traffic and the speeders. We had one child hit, by the way, last year. Luckily, it was, he survived, and it was a leg injury. Um, I'm just saying that with the taco stand, the added traffic with this unit, I think it'll be very detrimental for our neighborhood. And I would really hope that if you wanna find out how it is, just go down and see what happens when the, when the beer guy comes to deliver, when the school bus goes through. Is there gonna be enough room? What kind of chaos are we creating? I mean, if you can come visit during the day, during when it's busy, and at night, and you'll find out what I'm talking about. It's too narrow of a road. It was never meant to be for this volume of traffic. I think it was meant for it to be like for two wagons back in 100 years ago. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Refrain from clapping, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Franklin, and I've lived at 95 Nicoletti, so it's a five houses down from that area. And I think I would echo much of what has been said tonight in opposition of the rezon, in that a rezon would provide the opportunity to build such a building that would negatively impact our area. Not that it might necessarily happen, but it provides the opportunity to. But what I'm really concerned is what has been said around the safety. So just recently, we had someone move across the street that has a young child and a dog. There's been many times where we've been out in the yard and a car going not 30 miles, but like 50 miles an hour. I'm not sure from the bar area, but that turn from State to Nicoletti, and that's quick drive-through, allows people to just go 50 miles an hour. And we've had, you know, people yelling at us, and then also families around with their kids saying, yelling, slow down. If you have a bar over here and a mixed-resident area over here with so many cars, where do you expect all the cars to go? There's no room. The activity is too much. I support development. I think there's other things to bring to the, that would bring to the environment that would enhance the neighborhood. A coffee shop, a couple houses per se, but that much traffic, it's not safe. And if I'm looking for a place to live, if I'm moving out of Salt Lake, because I can't afford it, I'm looking to Midville. I also want a place that's safe for my kids, safe for my animals, my own safety. That's what I consider, you know, to some degree. Some of the crime activity, I can't control that, but in terms of safety, that's something we can control. We can sort of rezone to think about how many cars are in a certain area. I don't see a lot of people walking around that area except out of the bar into their cars and driving down the street. So that's where one of my main concerns is, is the traffic that will go through that area that'll impact the area in terms of will people want to be attracted there further in the future? Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
My name is Gary Garcia. I live at 7360 South Ramani Drive. Before, I lived on 75 or 7500 South 85 East. I've lived in that neighborhood for 56 years. I grew up in that neighborhood. I pretty much know everything that goes on in that neighborhood. As she says, Midville City has done things for us. I've lived at my house, at my own house, my parents live around the corner for 23 years. We were having, we still have a problem with the traffic on Ramani Drive. No police ever come, never seen anybody give speeding tickets, only when they come off 72. We got the speed limit things, the whole street. We signed a petition and got bumps on the road. They did put them, I wish they were higher. We still get people going through there 60 miles an hour. And the police never go there and patrol them. So I don't know where all this traffic's going to go, especially when you're going to bring in at least 50 more cars, and they're going to have to go to Ramani or down to State Street. And they're going to come back and forth, because Ramani is the only street from 72 to 7500, and it is used all the time except to clear up on 50s. So, and the people on that street, in the summertime, everybody's got signs on their, on their front doors or those little green things for people to slow down. Don't even derrile your kids or my grandkids outside without somebody out there. That's all I have to say. They need to do a traffic survey, because this is not going to work. Thank you.
Can I get your name one more time?
Gary Garcia.
Thank you.
I forgot to add, if I may, from.
Say your name, sorry.
I'm Dale Alvarado. I'm at 98 Nicoletti. I forgot to add something that's important. From 72 East Nicoletti to 108, on the south end of the road, there is no sidewalk. People walk on the road. There is no sidewalk. At 71 and 78, on the other side of the road, there's two duplexes, and there's cars, there's about eight cars or more sticking out in the road, about five feet. So instead of 20, 25 feet wide, it's more like 20 feet when it's at night. So that, those are the two things I forgot to mention. That means it's narrow, and there is no sidewalk. If you can please come visit us, you'll see, I don't have a sidewalk. My neighbors don't have a sidewalk. Mr. and Mrs. Peppers don't have a sidewalk. So that's another thing that needs to be considered for the safety of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tanya Lilanu. I live at 95 East Nicoletti. I actually came up to say what she mentioned, that half of that street doesn't have a sidewalk. And so people are walking down the middle of the street all the time. My kids are now teenagers, but when they were little, there's no way I would have let them play in the front yard. Even with an adult watching, because how fast can adults get to a kid running unless they're standing at the very edge? It just wouldn't happen. We're lucky to have a backyard that they could play in. And now, as teenagers, they want to walk to Walgreens. And I track their every move to make sure they're continuing to move, and they haven't been hit by a car and it's laying in the street. Because there's no sidewalk, and like everyone has mentioned, people are speeding down that street constantly. My sister lives on 7800. It's walking distance from our house. And I don't let my kids walk or bike there by themselves because of the traffic and because of the way people drive through there. It's just not safe. And as it was pointed out, to add this duplex on one end and have the bar on the other end is just going to magnify the problem. I've lived in my house. I bought it 11 years ago, and I love my neighborhood. I love my neighbors. I know that if I'm out of town, or if something happens, I can rely on them and I can talk to them. And now, as a homeowner and a parent, if I were looking for a neighborhood to move into, and I knew that this project was going in, I wouldn't want to buy property there anymore. It would definitely deter me from the sweet, quiet neighborhood that I'm in now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Laura Hale. I live on 7332 Lane Drive, so it's about two blocks from this spot. I'm not very familiar with these type of things, but just for my clarification, is this meeting is just for rezoning at this point?
Correct.
Okay, so I am in favor of rezoning. I feel like that lot on the corner is very trashy, and that encourages crime and a lot of the detrimental things that we have been complaining about. My question would be, with the rezoning, what exactly, with the rezoning, what exactly would be allowed there? Because some developments I can see being helpful, and other ones I see as worsening the problem. So if it was rezoned, what kind of usage would it be given?
Be a question for our planning department.
Trying to.
I can hear you.
So with the mixed-use zone, they're the MU zone, there's a number of commercial uses that it could be. It could be a higher-density residential such as this. Again, the limiting factor is going to be space and parking and whatnot, but it could be something similar to what is the concept that's paired with the rezon, or it could be strictly commercial. It could be office, restaurant, retail. There's any number of uses it could be.
Okay, yeah, because like I said, I am actually very much in favor of rezoning it, because I feel like all the residential houses along that street, that street has gotten so busy that it's not going to encourage people who are going to bring the neighborhood up to live there. It's, you know, it's just not what that street is for anymore. But certain businesses would either help or hinder us. And if this rezoning was approved, what would be the next step as far as us as a neighborhood knowing what kind of place would be built there?
Notification would have to go out again for that type of use, so there would still be a public notice.
Okay.
And there would be more, that would come with a more concrete set of plans as far as not just conceptual, but there would be more involved there, more detail-oriented plans.
Okay, and is there, are there any kind of guidelines or anything besides just putting out a flyer for us to read about as far as what direction that would be going?
I guess it would depend on what is officially submitted. So until that happens, it would be hard to say.
Okay, right, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joseph Pepper. I live at 104 East Nicoletti Drive. I've heard that on this unit, the 17 units in that building are going to exit onto Nicoletti Drive. Is that correct?
The concept that they're showing, yes, does have that access point there. Again, this is just the rezon. It's not, we haven't dove into the details of the development itself.
Probably one of the reasons that you feel like our group over there feels neglected or not, was here a few years ago. They came in there and started putting curb gutter and sidewalks to all of Midville on the east side of State Street there. They were putting curtain gutters all the way to State Street. And they got to the street right to the south of us, and they stopped. And they never did our street. So we kind of feel like we was left out, and that's probably why someone has said that we don't feel like we get much attention there. And that's, that's probably why we feel left out, is because that happened here about three or four years ago. But other than that, we appreciate everything you do for us over there.
Well, and we appreciate you, and sometimes the city runs a little low on cash, you know.
That was what they told me, yeah.
Yeah, so. Yeah, sometimes our budgeting, you know.
I just figured I'd live with it.
But thank you.
Just a second. Just for information, sometimes things are brought to us. We really don't have a choice. It's legislation items or things like that. There are things we have to pass. It's almost like we don't have a choice. You need to understand what our job is. Come to an open house, find out what our jobs are. We care about the residents. I grew up here. I graduated from high school here, went all through my schooling here, and I came back and lived here. You need to understand that a lot of times our hands are tied with what we can do. We hear you. We listen to you, and sometimes we can't pass things just because of emotion. We just can't. And we may be 100% on your side and see where you're coming from. Our hands are tied legally sometimes to even have a, have a choice in what we're doing. So you need to understand, we're not trying to be cruel and not listen or anything like that. Sometimes our hands are tied to what we can do legally, seriously. We have an attorney that we have listening to us right now, so we have to, we have to be mindful of that as well. We're not trying to ignore anyone. We try and do our job the best of our ability and feel we're residents. We know what it feels like. So just so you know, we're not against you. We listen. Sometimes can't do what we want to do.
And one of the things too, one of the duties that we perform is that we look at the situation and then we vote on it. You know, the best we can, what we think, and it's rezoning, this type of thing, but then we pass it on to the city council. Now, they're the ones to make the final decision. We can only suggest and pass it on to them, but it's the city council that makes the final decision on these things. So we can just take the suggestions and do the best that, you know, we can possibly do, and then we pass it on to the council.
You can come up, state your name.
Dale Alvarado, so does it have any impact on the city council that there's so many of us that do not want this rezoning or redevelopment? Come to city council.
Yeah.
When is that going to take place?
It would depend on how.
What we would do, because this is, regardless which way it goes to council, whether it's a positive recommendation or a negative recommendation, we would want to make sure that the council has a copy of at least the draft minutes from this meeting. And so we would just make sure that the noticing timelines are met on top of being able to provide them with any kind of minutes from this meeting, so they can at least read through what happened, so.
Because we do want them to be aware of that we're concerned, and most of us do not, do not like the idea of having. You know.
And this, this one is an interesting situation in that, as the commissioner said, there are times where the ordinances are written where if everything is met, then the outcome would be either to approve or recommend approval. Now, a zone change is a little bit different in that there is a little bit more subjectivity, and that's why the staff report has pointed out where we feel a staff that it's met certain criteria. But it's not the same level as like a conditionally used permit. There's still a level of is this, does the planning commission also feel this is the right move? If they don't, they can make a recommendation of denial to the council. So this one is a little different in that there is, there's not that strict. I'm trying to find the right word, rigidity or whatnot, to certain criteria that others, other items that are placed before them have.
I think what you're trying to say is, does it meet the code? If it doesn't meet the code, we can.
Well, and I think we need to hear from our attorney, and we can, we can get his, after we close the public hearing, we can, we can do that, yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Robin Reinhardt, and I live at 727079 South 145 East. I've been there for 48 years. I paid property tax for 48 years. My mother and father live one house away that was left to me, and that is going to go to one of my sons. He's here today, but that will be his house shortly. We've loved the area, but what I would like to know is when, I mean, you've asked us to be here. You wanted to know our feelings. How is this going to help my life? What is this rezoning going to do for me? I know that the number one thing for Midville is revenue. So, but for me and for everyone here, it definitely looks like a big disadvantage. So in order for this to be abnico for everyone, I want to know how this is going to enhance my life.
I just would like to clarify something, and if the city attorney, sorry, Sarah Sherwood. And if the city attorney could possibly chime in to answer this question, I'd like the opinion of the city attorney and the information being different from what is presented to the commission and what was made publicly available, as well as the fact that these goals that are apparently met that bind you to a.
As well as the fact that these goals that are apparently met that bind you to an approval vote supposedly. I I would really like to know.
That's not what we said. That this, this is a legislative item. It's not some, this is not one of those items where we have to. If it meets these goals, we have to adopt. It's not one of those things.
Okay.
So please don't get that confused with with what like a conditional use or subdivision application would be.
Thank you for that clarification, sir. But i- i- you know, as we're talking, if there is, if there is an air. That you may be bound to a vote regard because it meets the statutory requirements of your zoning ordinance. I would like the city attorney's opinion on why the information changed from what was presented to the commission. Versus what was presented in the public packet and why that information changed from December the eighth till today.
If I could just, the, the, I think what you're referring to never, it was never discussed at the planning commission. So what they have tonight. Is really what's before everyone. So there, because there were errors in noticing before and so it was pulled from agendas.
Can you, can you come up and stand, sorry?
I did a complete and thorough review of both agendas for the public hearing today. Once again, as I stated in my talk earlier, the information that was published on December, for the December eighth meeting. Which was only moved because I forced it to be moved due to lack of proper legal notice. Only showed that this proposal satisfied requirement three. Now you're stating that it also meets requirement one, but nothing about the proposal has changed. So I do not understand how that information changed. The information also published in the public packet for today's meeting only showed. That the second goal, number six was met. Tonight you did a PowerPoint presentation showing that goal one was also met. That is not what was published to the public. You have an obligation to share the same information with the public as you do the zoning commission. And that has been inconsistent.
And I I couldn't speak for that. I apologize if it is. We'll just, I'll have to go back and look. I was just going off the report that I was given and.
And that is, that is part of the issue, along with the fact that I stated. That the report given to the commission said that there was no public objection and yet I had provided the commission email, an email that was sent on December the second. Another email that was sent today that you have, your office has an obligation to present to the zoning commission and that failed to occur.
All I can say is I did not get any emails in my inbox. Liz is out of town. If it went to Liz, that's probably why. And if it was today, because she's out of town and I don't have access to her inbox, but. When the report was written, that's why the statement was made. If there were any that I had received or I was aware of, I would have forwarded them on.
There was an email again sent December the second.
Arguing that I, so.
Well, I, the evidence has presented, been presented in writing to the zoning commission. And therein lies part of my problems about the transparency of how your department is being run.
Chad Jones. Just like to say, I truly do appreciate the passion. I do truly appreciate how much everybody cares about their community here. I hate that I'm feeling like I'm the bad guy ruining the community. I live right on the border of Midvale. No, I'm not a Midvale citizen, but I do ninety-five percent of my shopping in this four union area. I drive past this daily. This is my community also. I'm not trying to do something that's trying to tear apart the community. We're trying to make this something that's going to improve the community. My wife is also a realtor. Who has to deal every day with people trying to find places to live, who cannot find a place to live. Kim Gardner Policy Institute just came out with a study quarter four of twenty twenty-one. Saying that Utah has a fifty thousand house shortage. We're not trying to build something here that's catering to the. Californian to just jack up the prices. We're trying to find homes for people who need a place to live to fill the jobs that are needed. We're not trying to tear apart the committee. We're trying to improve it. Uh the traffic study was mentioned. I heard a lot about traffic. We have done a traffic study on this. Uh morning peak times trips is at the seventeen, even though we're doing sixteen now. Was for additional trips during morning peak hours and in the evenings, eight additional trips during peak hours. I I do um, I understand the concerns of crime. I understand that there's been statistics and reports that have been done, particularly on high density. That uh study that was referenced, I have no idea what high density is considered. We're putting sixteen units on this. There's zones in Salt Lake City down by the fairgrounds right now that allow two hundred units per acre. This is not even close to that. We're not trying to just fill this in. There's been plenty of the local developments done, Draper particularly. That's had a live work type space like this that has improved the community, has been brought in a professional environment that has reduced crime. Utility studies, we have been working with the water district and the city. We are committed, if we are to go forward with this. To upsize all the lines as necessary to serve this. Uh there will be no impact on additional utilities in the area. Question of for sale or for rent, uh we are proceeding. If we do get a proceed with this, we are. Plating these individually to have that option to have them for sale. Once again. We are trying to improve the community and helps solve some of the problems that we have. Thank you.
I am Linda Pepper and I live on ninety, uh one oh four Nicoletti Drive. Um. I've just wanted a little bit of clarification. I'm confused about like a unit. Years, they say. And I realize this is rezoning. This isn't uh again, it's been stated that it's not the, it, this isn't to approve this project. But a unit is like a unit is a building. Uh one building, does it have multiple residences in it? I mean, it's like. You say three story, what, what is there like? It within a building, would there be more than one? I mean, like total in sixteen units?
Sixteen units.
It would be per door, so one, one unit per door, sixteen doors.
It would be sixteen homes.
It would be sixteen.
And I think it was previously stated that there would not be more than four units per building, so.
So four units. Oh, so, so the buildings, so the buildings are not.
Not gonna be sixteen buildings.
Okay, they're not six, there's sixteen total units.
Correct.
Okay.
Four plexes.
I see, okay, all right. That was, I I just didn't understand that. That's just maybe how. The concern is he he mentioned a traffic study and did he say there were, it only added four? What was the, did you? Okay, um, traffic still is a concern and the, and the, the width of the street and everything and people do park on the street. We many times have uh times when we have, when people are parked on the street that we cannot get by. If another car is coming, it's like a one-way in all situation. So that, that is, that is a big concern and also. We do have a lot of walking traffic, quite a bit of walking traffic and it's been stated before, no sidewalks from. Well, from one oh four on down to State Street, which is a little bit hazardous, so. That's was just the question that I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Derek Garcia, I have a question for the last element that was up here. You're telling us that you're concerned about community. What are you bringing to our community besides a building with a bunch of people? What is to going to improve our neighborhood? What will improve that you are bringing?
Chad Jones. We are bringing places for people to live, to fill the jobs that people can't. Can't be filled. People need places to live. We're bringing places that my kids can afford to live in when they grow up. We're being, we're bringing housing options for places to call home.
Tanya Lila new, I, I have a question for Mr. Olson. Um can you pull up the requirements again? That you said we're satisfied by the proposal, the zoning proposal?
I think it was uh.
Oh, this one.
These were with the general plan for that area and then the one before that was for the reasons, there's kind of like two sets.
This, the one you were on before, this one, yeah. Um. I guess for the first eight years that I lived in my house in Midvale, I would take tracks to work. I work downtown. I work for Dominion Energy. Uh and so I'm very familiar with the track station. I guess my question is, this says provide for higher density housing options and taller buildings. In the area around the track station, our neighborhood is not by the track station. I wouldn't walk. I would have my mom drop me off. At the track station, you know, because we only had one car. She would take the kids to school and I would go to work. I was a single mother and so. I I don't understand how we meet this qualification because I don't consider us close to the track station. I'm assuming you're referring to the one on seventy-second.
It's, these goals were specific for that um east gateway and so that's why it was, it was a broad area. And so because this fell within that broad area, those were the criteria that could be considered.
Okay, that, that seems deceptive to me, but okay, thank you for that clarification.
Gary Garcia, I'd like to rebuttal Mr. Olson. All he has told us is he wants to bring. Housing and stuff to people out of our neighborhood. What is he going to do for our neighborhood, the people that are already here? Besides bring more people into our neighborhood and make it more compact or it's going to be worse for us to live in. Thank you.
So I'm just gonna bring this up. Um typically, um this has been a really great discussion and everything. But typically, we only allow people to come up and speak for three minutes, one, one time, three minutes. This has been going on for a little while now, so I'm actually gonna move that we close the public hearing at this point. So I would go ahead and make that motion.
I'll go ahead and second it.
Kate, can we take a roll call, please?
You know, I I think we should let. The people that have a heart now there.
Okay. Okay, I'm fine with that.
We, we still have to take a vote on the motion, though.
Yeah, we do. I know, I know.
Hey, Kate, can we get a roll call?
They don't get, if they don't get up and say the same thing, you know.
Okay, I will take a roll call. Vice Chair Anderson.
No.
Commissioner Costello.
No.
Commissioner Tippett.
Yes.
Commissioner Smallwood.
Yes.
Uh although, yes, all here we have to say.
Matt Sherwood, um well, first of all, there's nothing in your.
Sorry, no. Sorry, Katie, no.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to know that there's nothing.
State your name, sorry.
That's true, but.
Okay.
Uh there's nothing in your procedure summaries about halting at three minutes for speaking. There is in the city council, but not to the planning commission. So that could be typical, but not in our situation. And I believe it said something about, you know, if it goes. Yeah, on like ten o'clock, then we can stop it. Um I just wanted to confirm, kind of seems like we went back and forth there that. Sometimes these situations, there's a lot of rigidity and we have to kind of rely on maybe what the attorney says. This happens, just to verify, this happens to be a situation where our hands are not tied. Where the commission can make a decision this evening to deny, approve or table the situation considering we have so much concern in our neighborhood. So I just wanted to clear that part up. So the decision can be made tonight, correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
Your hands are not tied, correct?
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure.
Just wanna.
I could ask, there's anyone else that wants to speak?
Is there anyone else who would like to speak before we close public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing.
I take it it.
Kate, can we get another roll call then?
Yes, Vice Chair Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Costello.
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett.
Yes.
And Commissioner Smallwood.
Yes.
Garrett, is Garrett on?
I am chair. Um so as has been discussed, this is a legislative uh decision that you are making tonight. Which means that you have a lot more flexibility than you otherwise would for an administrative decision. Now with that being said, um our city code does limit your discretion to approve a rezone application. Only if one of the three criteria um are found for rezoning. So I believe right now you have the general plan um goals in front of you. This would be, I believe, on the slide before that, that talks about. A proposed rezoning is necessary either to comply with the general plan for a proposed land use map. And so on. So if any one of those three criteria are found, you have the ability to. Approve the rezone application. If none of, if. You can't find any of those to support the rezone application. This is one of those instances that you would be required to deny the application because it doesn't meet the requirements of this ordinance.
Great, thank you. Do you guys have any questions?
Um I have a couple of things I want to address. Um so. I take a couple of of Ms. Sherwood's points, um highly offensive. Especially saying renters unlikely to have a home-based business. I I work in a city and I work with business licensing. Um and you would be surprised at how many people actually do. You have a lot of people that work in salons and do hair care, do nails, do things like that. That have home based businesses and that are renters. Um and then also, so I take offense at that, that. That people that rent are somehow less than people that own. Um I think that's, that's unfair. Um also. It was kind of addressed earlier um by the applicant, which is great, but the city itself cannot dictate whether um. A property can be rented or owned or occupied. That's, that's against fair housing laws. It's just not allowed in, in. In in cities, we can't dictate that. So during, so that, that's like coming to us and telling us or or coming to somebody's home and saying you can't rent out your home. If you decide that's what you want to do. It's private property rights. Um so that's, those are the two main things. I will say that I am disappointed that we didn't get this email from, from. Um Ms. Sherwood, uh it, this should have been provided as part of the packet. So I I, yeah, um I I would agree with that and I I'm. Yeah, that's where I'm kind of at, at the moment.
Anybody else?
Um my concern is eventually this property is going to be something. Eventually, something's gonna go there. Um and you may never like what goes there, ever. That you, we never, we may never find something that. That all the neighborhood agrees with. And and so rezoning this only opens that up to development. Again, we are not. Agreeing to this sixteen unit proposal. All we are doing is making it possible for something to go there. It will still have another hearing. It will still have another public hearing. It will still go to the city council, but. Our hands are tied as far as do we let it be rezoned now? Or eventually it's gonna happen. So do we do it now or later? It's basically the, where we're at. But I do agree that we should have received the materials that were presented to us tonight before we were here at the meeting. And that's all I have.
So are we limited to the zoning? Why could?
So are we limited to the zoning? Why could we not have this commercially zone then? I mean, that would. Do you see what I'm saying? I mean, that.
Well, eventually their property is going to be rezoned somehow.
Right. It's too bad.
But this is going to be mixed use, so it doesn't that still open it up for commercial? It's it's mixed use, so.
I mean, it'd be perfect commercial because you've got commercial right there. I can see I can see everyone's concern. I can see everyone's. I mean, it it would be nice if we knew if we had a crystal ball and knew what was going to be there and we don't.
We don't.
But this is.
But where it's mixed use.
I'm what I really struggle with is for me, and it's a big thing for me is the transparency. If if people feel like this hasn't been on the up and up, they didn't have it. We didn't have anything. That's really bothersome to me.
An option you have is to table it if you want more in. I mean, if you feel that stuff was lacking. Again, I I apologize. I can I can work with Liz to make sure that everything that she has is with you, but.
Obviously, we had objections.
And and I understand that, but if there's stuff that she did not receive that didn't go in the packet, I can't fault her for not putting that in. And she's not here to speak to that, so I can't really say much to it.
Is that our only option, Candy, is to just?
Well, I would I would be happy.
Count the council?
Well, no, we have to make we have to either we either have to table it or we have to make a recommendation to the council. Those are our two options. So.
Can I get a motion?
I'm trying to think about what the best thing to do is.
I don't think you can make a wrong decision here, whether I mean, if if you decide to table it because you want whatever information was provided in a more comprehensive packet. I mean, that's that's not wrong. You can do that. So.
Well.
So um, this is probably going to be kind of shocking for at least the planning commission, not necessarily the residents, because you don't know my record per se. But I am ready to make a recommendation. I recommend that this action be that the planning commission forward a recommendation of denial to the city council. I don't feel like it meets the applicable codes and ordinances.
I second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Kate, can I get a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Smallwood.
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Costello.
Yes.
Okay.
We'll go ahead and forward that recommendation.
Forward it to the city council.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for coming and participating.
Thanks for all the research.
Council meeting.
Thank you.
Go to the council.
Make sure you attend.
Thank you. All right, our next item. Is Nancy Stoddard's request rezone approval for property located at one seventy east, seventy two hundred south from single family residence duplex overlay.
Can we can we please ask that you lead the council chambers? We have still have a meeting to finish. And carry on your conversations outside. Thank you.
Sorry, single family residence duplex overlay seventy two hundred south overlay. SF one to seventy two hundred south to mixed use seventy two hundred south overlay for small use office. And Adam is presenting.
Yes, please.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just so you know, Candace is here. I'm online.
Welcome, Candace.
So you know.
When we open the public hearing, yes.
Then you can do whatever you'd like.
You can speak then.
Sorry, for those on Zoom, we just had to clear out there.
Do you think I should?
Okay, so this next request for rezone is actually the property right next to it. The only difference with this one is they are not proposing a residential use. They're proposing that the existing residential use be remodeled and turned into an office use. Their idea is for therapy. But again, it's that's not what it's bound to. It could be a number of commercial uses, but it it cannot be done under its current zone. And so again, as we've looked at it, we feel that it meets the criteria number three and one. I realize one is not highlighted. It is in the report highlighted, just not on the PowerPoint. That the rezone furthers those two goals for the rezone criteria. And additionally, that it furthers goal number six in the east gateway opportunity area. As it will be more of a light commercial use. So with that, the staff recommendation is approval for the rezone request.
Advocate first.
Is applicant here?
Come and talk to us.
Nancy Stoddard.
That's enough to scare you to death.
Lord, I'll tell you what.
We got the hard part over with.
At first I thought, well, maybe I should just shower first and now I'm really grateful I was not. And thank you for your hard work because. So Nancy Stoddard and I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I work with children, adolescents and adults. And I am proposing a mixed use rezone of this property so that I can turn that into an office space. It's small, three bedroom, twelve hundred square foot home. No adding on, just remodeling the interior. I would be, I'm mostly full time. I have two other called colleagues who are part time. There is plenty of property or plenty of parking on the property itself. So I don't even think we would ever need any off street parking for either the therapists who are there or or for any of our clients. We see really low risk clientele, nothing that's court ordered, nothing that would bring any risk into the area with our clientele. And it just is a very low density business, one client per hour, per therapist, normal business hours, Monday through Friday. Again, I would be there the most typically nine or ten to five, Monday through Friday. And other therapists are just a couple of days a week, about six hours a day. I think that's it.
So you don't feel any so parking it really isn't an issue there is that you're talking one car, two cars?
Yeah, yes. And then there's so much concrete on the property itself that there's plenty of parking right on site.
If if I make commissioners, this one would at at minimum be a staff level approval and we do ensure that there are that parking is met. So that would be something that we would look at to see that, okay, is the minimum required parking met here? I realize it's a tight space, but we'd still be looking at that. So.
I think it was just on my mind because it came up in the last.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Like to open this up for public comment.
So we get anything email or anything about it? Okay.
Seeing none, I'll move that we close the public hearing portion.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Kate, can we get a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Costello.
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett.
Yes.
And Commissioner Smallwood.
Yes.
Okay, I can make a motion.
Okay.
Okay, okay, I move that we recommend approval of the rezone located at one seventy east, seventy two hundred south, consistent with the findings noted in the staff report.
I second it.
Been moved and seconded. Kate?
Yes, Commissioner Tippett.
Yes.
Commissioner Smallwood.
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Costello.
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead and make that recommendation to the city council.
We'll make that recommendation, city council. Sorry.
Yeah.
Yes. I would.
Thank you.
Yeah.
One of the best that I've ever, like you guys have been so amazing to work with.
Thank you.
I've heard him speak, I believe, about the police officers in Midvale and they are.
I think they're top notch.
And and I own probably one of the businesses that most people don't like. I own a bar. I own the Midville.
Oh, which 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 one do you own?
I own the Midville.
Oh, okay.
So it's up behind the old poppers.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So but we have had nothing but like I've I've always been because I owned a bar in Midvale, Murray, and we were always treated like second to dirt, you know what I mean? And Midvale has been such a such a total different experience for us. It's really has been amazing. So thank you for all your hard work and I hate that people bash the cops because the police, I mean, when you're at bar, you don't want police anywhere near you. Nothing but amazing to us. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, with your attitude, you made my day.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Item three zoning ordinance text amendment to chapter seventeen dash seven.
And Adam will be so fast.
To address projections and decide yard setbacks. Adam is presenting.
Yep, the this one is by far the most difficult tonight.
Thanks.
Now, this one, this one really is just kind of a housekeeping item. As we've looked at the code, there are there are provisions that allow projections into the side yard or encroachments. Well, one provision only allows two and a half feet, which is what you see before you for sills, cornices, chimneys, et cetera. Well, the very next section for other items allows a three foot projection. And so in order to make it more consistent and clean that up, we thought, why don't we just change this to three as well? And it will make it easier for builders and homeowners as they're looking to remodel. We've had this issue come up where there has been some confusion. So in order to clean the code, this was just a one that we felt could be cleaned up rather quickly and easily. So that's why it's before you tonight. I can answer any questions, but it does affect a number of sections. But what I tried to do is be very concise. I outlined those sections. And then the in the actual ordinance itself, it's just the the new wording to replace what's in those very particular sections. So. And obviously, we recommend approval of that.
Was it twenty four inches at one time?
I don't know. It it could have been so, but I don't know.
I think it's I think it's probably three or four.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just felt in order for consistency's sake, rather than have one sentence, two and a half and one, three, let's make it three across the board. Be a little more a little more wiggle room.
Commissioners?
I don't have any questions.
We have to make a motion on this.
Do we make a motion?
A public hearing first.
I'd like to open this up with a hearing.
And I'll move that we close the public.
And I'll second that.
Kate, can I get a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Tippett.
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Costello.
Yes.
And Commissioner Smallwood.
Yes.
Now that we're having.
No questions.
Seeing there is none, can we get a motion?
I'll go ahead and make the motion, although I hate all these numbers.
Yeah.
I move that we recommend approval of the request to amend chapters seventeen dash seven dash one point four point A point two small A, seventeen dash seven dash two point four point A point two small A, seventeen dash seven dash three point four point A point two small A and seventeen dash seven dash four point four point A point two small A relating to project projections into side yard setbacks of the Midvale City Municipal Code with the findings noted in the staff report.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Kate, roll call?
Yes, Vice Chair Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Costello.
Yes.
Commissioner Smallwood.
Yes.
And Commissioner Tippett.
Yes.
Great. And next staff update.
So upcoming meetings, we will have a few items for our next meeting, some, I believe, a subdivision plat. Now my mind's going blank, but there are a number of items that we'll bring before you. We're also trying to figure out when to hold the open house. As you know, we were going to do it and then everything just shut down again. So we're trying to figure out, we're hoping as we climb out of this, that we'll be able to do that again. And then also, I just wanted to, I know I've not been here terribly long, but I I do want to say thank you for Commissioner Smallwood and Costello for your service on the planning commission. This is their last evening with us. Our next meeting, we will have two new planning commissioners. They're excited to get going and I think they'll be great additions to the planning commission.
Cool. Great.
I'm gonna miss you guys. Yeah.
I'll miss you guys too.
I'll miss you guys.
You're always welcome to come back.
Please.
But don't be making any comments.
Oh, I'm gonna lots.
Okay.
I like the motion to close this meeting at seven thirty three.
Meeting's adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Is there like the three day write a refusal on this position?
No.
This was your worst.